Good evening and welcome to the May 22nd, 2025 Melville School District Board of Education. If we could please all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next I will do roll call. Tori Belkey?
Here.
I'm Peggy Hassler. Patrick McKelvey has an excused absence. Jean Preto.
Here.
Serene Wilkinson.
Here.
Jeff Woolman.
Present.
And Ann Zimfer.
Here.
Okay, could I please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Next is Communications, and we will hear from our Superintendent, Dr. Jeff Hogg, with a Superintendent update.
Alright, thank you. Good evening. My name's Jeff Hogg. I'm the Superintendent of Schools. And as we've done this year, we love to highlight how amazing our kids and teachers and staff are. And so we'll continue that here. We have so many smiling faces, a couple people in the crowd. I actually know are in the slideshow here, so we'll just get started. A couple of weekends ago, on April 26th, we held our first annual district art show at Oakville High School. It was pre-K through 12. The artwork, you can kind of see a picture of just the vast scope there. The more amazing part is that we had 2,600 people come through the door to see that and enjoy that. You don't get that a lot of places. You can put a K-12 art show out there, but you do not get that many people to come through and support it. So that was just absolutely amazing. And then we have our winners. Ellen E. Muller from Oakville High School won the overall, also won 3D Art, and then Audrey Gettaker from Melville High School. And then we have Stella Kolbe from OHS and Sophia Davis from MHS. So all of that artwork, all of those people, and these four really just stood out, which is just absolutely cool. And then we have our State Band Solo and Ensemble Festival. We brought you the district qualifiers last month, and we have the state band here. You'll see, if you look closely, very top left, you'll see Elliot up there. One of these days, one of these months, we're going to keep Elliot and Vildana out of this slideshow. They are always in this thing. I don't think I'm doing one in June, so we might be able to keep you guys out then. But again, just really, really cool with our kids earning gold and silver. Oakville, same thing. State Band Solo and Ensemble Festival. Just amazing kids, amazing work. And then State Choir and Solo Ensemble, our winners from Melville High, you can see them on the board there. And then we had Oakville Choir and Solo Ensemble Festival. So really just a great representation, a great showing of our kids all across the board. Again, Ian Moore was in that last group, but he received a really cool, special theatrical recognition for his portrayal of Lurch in The Addams Family, and he was amazing. He deserved every accolade that he got. Seal of By Literacy, we had 13 Melville students receive that. That is students showing that they are they are absolutely bilingual. Two, they have mastered two different languages, and they have not only done that through just verbal, but through testing as well. So we had 13 at Melville High School, and we had 13 at Oakville High School. That will then be on their transcript that they can take with them and show that, you know, when they apply to colleges. It looks incredibly good. Then we had St. Louis University Health Symposium. These three girls, we got to see, they sent us their presentations, and if you just read that, SLU American Society for Biochemistry and Molecular Biology. What they presented was just unreal. So could not be more proud of those three. And then our Technology Student Associate State Competition. We had three students win at the state level, and they're going to Nationals this year. Our Skills USA State Medalist, we brought you these students last year, or last month in districts. They went on to win or medal at the state level as well. And then this one's actually really cool. They had a spire, spire at a competition between North Tech and South Tech students. And Joe broke the tie. The tiebreaker was for whoever could replace the gas meter fast enough, and he replaced one in a minute and 15 seconds and helped South Tech win. So really kind of cool. I'm going to keep that kid on speed dial. Breaking Traditions, Tamara White, Melville High School student, received an award from the Department of Elementary Education. And then TOPPS at Tech. So these six students were named TOPPS in their program, not just for our high schools, but TOPPS in the entire program at South Tech. So you can see we had three from Melville and then three from Oakville. And then Logan, through his CAPS program, won an award that helped, it was called Take Flight, and helped elementary students learn about aerodynamics by testing different designs on airplanes. Project Lead the Way, we had four students receive Capstone Showcase Awards, and you can see them up there. And then we had our Kiwanis Terrific Kids at Woolman this month. And then we had our Kiwanis Scholarship recipients. So these were the two that received the scholarships from Kiwanis. They were honored at the 60-plus, which was really cool. Their families were there. And in front of probably 120 of our 60-plus community, just got to receive some really cool accolades. And then our 60-plus event at Forter, again, the strings played, Kiwanis barbecued. It was a great event and a good way to end the year. And then Chess Champion, San Alberca from Melville High School, had a 29, 6, and 6 record, played over 200 different people this year, and was crowned the Gateway Chess Champion. Academic All-State Cross Country, we brought you the Melville High School Academic All-State Cross Country last month. Oakville is this month. And then Project Lead the Way recognition, both of our high schools and Washington Middle School received accolades from Project Lead the Way, which is really impressive. So distinguished programs there. And then Rich Sturm, the PE teacher, baseball softball coach at Oakville High School, was initiated into the Greater St. Louis Amateur Baseball Hall of Fame. Devonte Shivers, Specialist School District Teacher Assistant at Oakville High School, received an award from our CHADS Coalition. And then Tiffany Schwegel earned her doctorate. She is our Director of Early Melville Early Childhood Center. And then this was pretty cool, Jerry Spitznagle, who has done so much work with our path and different outdoor areas at our Early Childhood Center, was honored by Kiwanis. It was neat. He went there thinking that he was just given a presentation, had no idea about the award. Some of his family, it was just, it was a really cool day. And then our two post-espash Scholar Athletes, you guys know what a Scholar Athlete is. It is just an absolute amazing honor, an unbelievable culmination of your high school career when you play so many sports and you take your school work so seriously. So you'll remember Amar. He was our student advisor last year from Oakville High School. And then Allison is in the crowd, so I'm sure she's going to be recognized here in a little bit as well. And then we wrapped up our very first steering committee meeting. We toured Beerbomb, probably had about 47 people in the crowd and just gave us feedback. So we will continue that work. We'll continue our strategic plan work. So anybody in the audience who wants to be a part of both of those, please check out the website. You can get involved still with both of those. But again, it's not about facilities, it's about our kids, and it's about our staff. So there will be much more to come. But again, as you guys know, we just have amazing kids. Thank you.
Alright, congratulations to everyone that was recognized in your updates. Next up are Student Advisors to the Board Report. So Vildana Corcoric, she represents Oakville High School, and Elliot Parait represents Melville High School. These two students were nominated by their teachers and their principals to serve as our student board reps. So each month they come and they give us an update on what's happening in their schools. So I'm passing that along to all of you younger students in the audience, so you can keep your eye on that possibility someday. You too can come and be our student rep. So Vildana, do you want to go first?
Good evening, everyone. It's safe to say this week has been very busy. Students have been finishing up finals, signing yearbooks, and saying their goodbyes before summer break. Seniors are getting ready for graduation, and there's definitely a mix of excitement and nostalgia in the air. A lot of teachers have been celebrating the end of year with class parties, awards, and final reflections. Sports teams have also been holding their end-of-season banquets to recognize athletes and celebrate their accomplishments. You can feel the energy and anticipation everywhere. As we wrap up the school year, tomorrow being the last day, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to serve as the student advisor this year. It's been a really meaningful experience to be able to share student perspectives and keep you updated on everything happening at Oakville. I hope you all have a great summer.
Elliot?
Alright, well, I want to start by saying this is the last meeting of the school year, and I brought my yearbook. So speaking of signing yearbooks, yeah, our yearbook class did an excellent job on this. This is probably my favorite yearbook I've ever seen come out of Melville. I can't stop having people sign it. Finals started yesterday, and seniors are ramping up for exciting activities tomorrow, which is a half-day. Tomorrow, underclassmen have two more finals to complete, so it's not done yet. This week is Stucco Good Vibes Week, a spirit week wrapping up the year. You know, good vibes, you know how it is. Melville Choirs and Bands performed their spring concerts, and they both recognized seniors. We had two guys place eighth at state in boys tennis, Adem Pasic and Anas Ramic. And my brother is receiving an award tonight, so if you were looking at that Dr. Hogg's presentation, you could see him a few times. You'd also see Allison. It's like you're playing Where's Waldo, and it's quite a bit of fun. And lastly, I'd like to mention that summer school sessions are rapidly approaching, and that a true student learns not only in school, but for their entire life. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Elliot and Vildana. Next is recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. So first up is Oakville Elementary with Dr. Megan Ochoa.
Good evening. My name is Megan Ochoa, and I am the principal of Oakville Elementary. It is my distinct privilege to introduce to you Mrs. Raquel Riddle and these fifth-grade students of our Science Club and OES Fifth Grade Science Club members. This year, we had 10 incredibly enthusiastic students from OES who dedicated several weeks to the Science Club. These bright and curious young individuals consistently arrived at school early, eager to immerse themselves in the fascinating world of the scientific process. They successfully developed original ideas, planned and managed their products, conducted experiments, analyzed the data they collected, and drew meaningful conclusions from their findings. They creatively presented their work, effectively communicating their scientific journeys and discoveries. Beyond their grasp of the scientific method, these students have demonstrated excellent critical thinking skills, communication, and collaboration skills. I am thrilled to share that after entering their projects into the St. Louis Science Fair and competing against other talented young scientists in the region, they achieved several awards. And I'd like to invite Mrs. Raquel Riddle up to the podium to read each student's name and the award that they won.
Thank you, Dr. Ochoa. My name is Raquel Riddle, fifth-grade teacher and OES Science Club sponsor. Thank you for allowing me to recognize these amazing students for their outstanding accomplishments. First, I would like to recognize Ms. Ila Cracker. Ila, could you step forward a little bit, please? Ila Cracker earned a Blue Ribbon Award, and in addition to that, she also earned the Bayer Outstanding Young Scientist Award as well, and it has scholarship money attached to it. In addition to Ila, we had some other Blue Ribbon Award winners, which include Hadi Abu Quader. Amar Asman Basic, he could not be here today. Dylan Janesco. Avery Kristal Alvich. And Margot Crooks. In addition, we had some Red Ribbon Award winners, who included Amelia Yakub. And Skylar Burke, who could not be here tonight. We also had some Green Ribbon Award winners, Nathan Heeman. And Murad Abu Quader. Congratulations to all of our OES scientists for hard work, dedication, and commitment to science exploration. I'm extremely proud of all of them.
Alright, congratulations, OES Science Club. Next up is Rogers Elementary, Dr. Patrick Kenoj.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Kenoj, and I am the principal of Rogers Elementary School. And I am here tonight with our LEGO club, of which Mrs. McGuire and Mrs. Mahachek will speak about this club.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Anna McGuire. I'm Instructional Innovation Specialist.
John Mahachek, first-grade teacher.
We're just here to tell you a little bit about our LEGO club. So our LEGO club that we had at Rogers consisted of 16 fourth and fifth-grade students. We have two members here with us tonight. We have Frankie Slovacek and Dylan Kusman. And during our LEGO club, students worked collaboratively to create various imaginative LEGO builds. Our groups of students worked together and had the option to also integrate computer science into their LEGO builds by using LEGO for Education Spike Coding Kits. These creations allowed them to kind of combine their imaginative play, various challenges, with also the skills of coding. During this, they created things that included sensors, motors, color-changing blocks, and other various coding along to make kind of their LEGO creations move. We'll read a little bit. We had students summarize what they did in LEGO club, and they summarized this by saying, "Some benefits of building with LEGO is that it increases teamwork, social communication, problem-solving skills, creativity, experimentation, perseverance, managing emotions, self-confidence, patience, and concentration skills." And I think we also had a little fun while doing all that. So thank you again for inviting us and to be recognized tonight.
Alright, Rogers. Thanks for sharing about your LEGO club. That's awesome. Next is Melville High School with Dr. Jason Landher.
Good evening. I'm Jason Landher, principal at Melville High School, and thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to recognize just a few of our students tonight. So tonight I want to be celebrating two of our finest senior scholars, Ian Paray and Allison Miller. Ian is recognized not only as a National Merit Commended Scholar, but also a Missouri Top 100 Scholar. That award, given to only 100 seniors across the state of Missouri, puts students through a rigorous academic decathlon, looking at all their different academic scores as well as their involvement with their community, and puts Ian in the top half of the top 1% of all seniors. On top of that, we had our senior awards night just about a week ago, and I counted 12 different times that Ian visited the stage. We thought about just giving him a chair right up on stage, but the rest of us, winning numerous awards, the Nadelmann Scholarship, Kiwanis Scholarship, a STEM Scholarship. So his academics, you know, that list could go on for days. Also, I received the Seal of By Literacy. You saw him up on the slides earlier for that, as well as a state solo and ensemble, and his community involvement. As a member of the Boy Scouts, he received all 139 merit badges that he was eligible for, which is an incredibly impressive accomplishment. Our second senior tonight is Allison Miller, and Allison will be representing Melville High School in the Melville School District at the Naval Academy in the fall, the first Melville High School graduate in over 20 years to do that. Anything, anybody who knows about that process knows that it's incredibly grueling, and there's a lot of work that goes into it. And you know, that kind of who Allison is, her work ethic is second to none, whether it's in the classroom, in her 4.5 GPA, or in athletic field, where she's a three-sport athlete and been involved in varsity sports the majority of her four years here at Melville. She's just a tremendous representative of who we are and our core values at Melville High School. She's also our Student Council President, as you saw, our representative for this post-espash Scholar Athlete. So just two of our seniors that we're incredibly proud of and can't wait to see what the next chapter holds for them. So congratulations, Ian and Allison.
Good evening. Tonight we have three students that Melville NEA would like to recognize. We have one from Rogers Elementary, Oakville Elementary, and Melville High School. We'll start with Rogers Elementary.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Charles, and I teach third grade at Rogers Elementary. And I am proud to recognize Ariane Sabasic as Rogers Elementary Student of the Month for May. Come on. Ariane consistently demonstrates the qualities of an outstanding student, both academically and in the way he builds positive relationships with his peers. He is a dedicated worker who pays close attention to detail and isn't afraid to ask questions when something is unclear. Ariane actively participates in class discussions and embraces mistakes as opportunities to grow. He always puts forth his best effort, and when things don't go as planned, he encourages himself to try again with even greater determination. Ariane arrives each day with a bright smile, a cheerful good morning, and a genuine eagerness to learn. Beyond the classroom, Ariane is a kind and thoughtful friend to everyone. He goes out of his way to include others, especially during recess, and always chooses to do what's right. His sense of humor and joyful spirit are contagious. He enjoys a good joke and brings laughter wherever he goes. brings laughter wherever he goes. Ariane is a truly genuine individual and a shining example of good character in our classroom, school, and community. Keep doing an amazing job, Ariane, and let your positivity keep shining.
Next up, we have Oakville Elementary.
I'm Caitlin Dixon. I'm a 4th grade teacher at Oakville Elementary, and I'm proud to recognize Leila Lulich as our Oakville Student of the Month, or NEA Student of the Month. Leila consistently demonstrates kindness towards others, is always ready with a helping hand, and a positive attitude. Leila's a hard-working student and is responsible in getting her work done. She gives her best effort in everything she does, whether she's staying on top of assignments, participating in class discussions, or showing respect to peers and staff. Leila sets a wonderful example for others to follow. We are lucky to have such a thoughtful and dedicated student at OES. Congratulations, Leila.
Last up, we have Melville High School.
Hi, I'm Matt Phoenix from Melville High School. I'm proud to recognize Allison Miller as our Student of the Month. I'm not sure I can say anything that hasn't already been said, but I will say this, that beyond being very intelligent and a great athlete, she tends to find maybe the hardest thing to do and gravitate towards that. And I think the evidence is, I mean, the naval appointment is incredibly impressive, and I just wish you all the luck in the future.
All right, congratulations, everybody. I also want to mention that this is recorded on YouTube for all the parents. If you want to share with Grandma and Grandpa, and friends, and neighbors, you can go to the Melville School District website and find the YouTube channel. In this board meeting, your kid's presentation will be on YouTube. So, feel free to share. All right, we are still welcoming MNEA, Sarah Regan and Cindy Kidwell, and they are going to share with us who their mini grant recipients are.
Yeah, so each year, our exec board opens up mini grants for our members to apply for, and it's funding to continue buying manipulatives or fun things to encourage learning and exploration in their classrooms. And we thought that we would take a moment to kind of share those with you guys, and also share some of the cool things that our teachers are doing.
All right, first up, we have Beasley Elementary, and they bought games that help promote social, emotional skills, sportsmanship, and working together. Okay, Beasley bought Legos for their art studio to help with 3D art exploration and architecture concepts. Oakville Elementary bought microphones so that they could use those to help make their One Amplify unit, Unit 9 for Fairy Tales, where they got to record their own story. Oakville Middle School bought supplies for various creative writing and theater arts projects, such as costuming, lighting design, and special effects makeup. And then, we also were able to donate to the foods program at Melville High School for various supplies for their really cool food truck project. This is the first time I've seen it. I don't know if it's their first year, but I thought it was so cute. And then, we were also able to help support the Berkeley High Five Quality Program. It's rewarding students for displaying the Berkeley's High Five Qualities, whether it's like little prizes or tokens, just to help encourage those students to continue to make good choices. And then, at Forter Elementary, a 5th grade teacher was able to continue buying more math manipulatives to continue that hands-on learning with math. That's it? Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. This is a great transition time. We'd love that all of our families are here, but if you guys don't want to stick around, you're not going to hurt our feelings. If some of you who have students who are recognized, if you do want to leave, that is absolutely fine. Last night before the last day of school, so you guys, thank you so much for coming, but if you do want to go, please feel free.
Okay. And I also want to thank MNEA for providing those mini grant recipients, and also, I didn't know about them. So, thank you, Sarah and Cindy, for giving us that information and letting us know that you guys do that. That's very cool, and we appreciate all the support that you give your members, and of course, in turn, all of our students. So, thank you. All right, next is open period for patron comments, and we do not have anyone signed up. So, we will move on to student achievement. First up is Oakville Elementary School, Dr. Megan Ochoa.
I told you, Dr. Hogg, we sit in the back because we get a little rowdy. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Megan Ochoa, and I'm the proud principal of Oakville Elementary. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity tonight to share some points of pride about OES. When I came to OES four years ago, our staff and I created a new theme. This is me, this is we, Oakville Elementary, where we are loved for our individuality and value the strength of community. And this theme continues to represent who we are today. So, as I go to my first slide up here, on this first slide, you'll see two Oakville students enjoying our playground. Last year, our PTO president, Mandy Janesco, noticed a student unable to access the equipment. We had been saving for a kindergarten playground, but after some discussions with staff and families, we decided to create a more accessible playground so all OES students could actively participate in recess. The result, you see on the screen, two boys that are swinging and smiling, enjoying each other's company. What you don't see is the poured concrete sidewalk making the swings accessible to the young man in the wheelchair, or the standing playground toys and musical instruments all students can access. We purchased several other items thanks to the amazing support from our families and PTO. On the next slide, you'll see, not only do we value our Oakville community, we also value the surrounding community. This year, our art teacher, Mr. Brian Adams, sponsored the first-ever Oakville Elementary Art Fair. Every single student in the school had at least one piece of artwork displayed. Through donations for items like clay pots and handcrafted jewelry, the OES community raised $928 to support the Annie's Hope Organization. At this assembly here on the screen, our students got to see firsthand that they can make a difference in the lives of others. So, we're very proud of not only our own Oakville community, but the support that we can give to the surrounding community. On this slide, you can see who we are as Oakville students. We have a total enrollment of 386 students. You can see from the graph that we have declined in enrollment since 2020. However, the last three years, we've kind of stayed steady at that 386 mark. You'll also notice that we do have a diverse population. We serve students that access our Free and Reduced programs, our Special Education programming, our English as a Second Language programming, and our Gifted programming. So, we do service a lot of students, and we appreciate all the individuals that belong to our community. On this slide, you can see our certified staff demographics. What you'll notice is we have a staff that's committed to lifelong learning. We have several teachers that have multiple degrees. You'll also notice to the right that many of our teachers have been not only in the district, but with Oakville Elementary for 20-plus years, which I believe shows their dedication not only to education, but their love for the community that they serve. On this slide, you'll see some of our academic achievement. Our mission at Oakville Elementary is Oakville Lions engage in learning for success. We believe that all students can achieve at high levels, and you can see on the screen that we have historically achieved high levels in reading. Our data shows consistent growth in reading proficiency across all grade levels, especially over the last three years. As a result of intentional instruction, we are closing achievement gaps for the majority of our students. On this next slide, you can see that while we are still achieving at high levels in math, we haven't reached the same levels that we have in reading. We have very few students in that third tier, that red tier, that are needing intensive interventions, but we do still have a larger number than we would hope in that second tier. So, we are working very hard to close those gaps in skills that those students might have. As I said, we are very proud of the achievement that we have, but we are continuously learning and wanting to get better. And so, on this slide, you'll see our school improvement goals. We have an attendance goal because we know that consistent attendance is crucial for student success. You'll see that we have three academic goals, one for reading, math, and one for science. We want to continue to achieve high in all of these core content areas. We have a goal for our sense of belonging. I've spoke a lot about community tonight, and that doesn't come without some action steps and intentionality, so we continue to work through that. And then, all of this is done through our PLC processes. This is where our staff are really continuous lifelong learners. Through professional learning communities, they collaborate, analyze data, and implement high-leverage teaching strategies. Finally, looking ahead, well, we are of course excited about the next school year, but in between then, thanks to Prop S and the expansion of our parking lot, this will be the first year ever Oakville Elementary has the opportunity to host summer school. And excitingly enough, we have over 450 students currently enrolled. Also, we just want to welcome all of the Melville students to Oakville, and like Vincent and Marin and Oakley the Lion would say, it's a great day to be a lion, so we can't wait to have some of those students here on our Oakville campus. And finally, I just want to say a big thank you to our community members behind me that came to support me and our school and are proud to be here. Thank you to the Board of Education for taking the time to listen to our points of pride. And at this point, I'll step back and answer any questions you may have.
All right. So, I think all of our questions were already asked pre-meeting. So, anybody that wants to see the question that were asked by the board, you can go onto eBoards, and they are all listed with the answers from Dr. Ochoa, right? So, but I did want to take this opportunity to thank you and your staff for the magnificent work you've done all year and the success that you are seeing with your students. So, if you would please pass along, and to the staff members that are here, thank you, thank you, thank you from all of us. We totally, very much appreciate their dedication, and we know that they are there supporting the district and the students daily, so we appreciate it. And I'm glad you guys survived the storm last Friday.
We are too. But yes, I will definitely pass that message along because I'm very proud of them, and I know that they would be happy to hear how grateful you guys are as well. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay, next is Rogers Elementary, Dr. Patrick Kenoi.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Patrick Kenoi, and I am the principal of Rogers Elementary School. Thank you for the opportunity to share the story of Rogers Elementary with you this evening. Each day at Rogers, we work to create an experience that stays with our students long after they leave our campus. We want our scholars to feel safe, supported, challenged, inspired to grow as learners, and ultimately to flourish. Bringing about high levels of learning is a central part of what we do each day. We nurture academic resilience, encouraging students to embrace challenges, persist through difficulty, and celebrate progress. That kind of experience is made possible through the efforts of many dedicated staff members, the involvement of families, and the steady support of a community that consistently shows up for our kids. Together, we build a culture where students feel safe, valued, and seen, one that's reinforced in both small, everyday moments and in school-wide celebrations. One way we lift up the culture we strive for is through our Bear Awards. These recognitions celebrate students who consistently demonstrate our bear behaviors of being ready, being respectful, and being responsible. More than a reward, they serve as a daily reminder that character counts. You can see and hear the joy from our students when they receive a Bear Award. Like one student who shared, "When I got a Bear Award, it made me feel proud. It made me want to keep doing the right thing, even when no one's watching." That's what we hope to foster at Rogers, moments that build lasting habits of character, integrity, and purpose. The spirit of Rogers also resides in the people who give their time and heart to our school. Our volunteers, parents, grandparents, friends, and community members help make our school feel like home. Whether they're helping in classrooms, painting the playground map, or supporting events, they remind our students that school is not just a place, it's a community. One volunteer remarked, "Being at Rogers makes you feel like you're a part of something that matters. We were honored to host a volunteer appreciation event this spring, a small way to say thank you for the big difference they make." This year, we served 419 students, and with new housing developments nearby, we anticipate growth in the coming years. Over the last four years, we at Rogers have seen an increase in the number of students receiving ELD services. In response, we added a full-time ELD specialist three years ago, which is just one more way we're showing that we're working to ensure every learner gets what they need to succeed. What also helps define Rogers is the experience and dedication of our staff. Many of our educators have served at Rogers for over a decade, and nearly half hold advanced degrees. These teachers just don't know instructional best practices. They know our students, our families, and what it means to belong at Rogers. Their consistency provides the stability and trust that our children need to flourish. When it comes to learning, we focus on both academic achievement and growth. Our eye-ready data shows gains in both ELA and math this year. That progress reflects the power of focused instruction, data-informed decisions, and purposeful collaboration within our professional learning communities. While we're proud of the growth we've seen, we know the work is ongoing, which is why our school improvement plan sets clear goals, not just in academics, but in belonging, staff retention, and deepening our PLC practices. These goals are grounded in our mission and driven by our belief that all students can learn at high levels, especially when relationships and support systems are strong. Looking ahead, our theme for next year is Inside Out, a lens through which will explore emotion, empathy, and connection, supporting both student well- supporting both student well-being and staff culture, two key ingredients in the academic success for our scholars. This year's theme was "You've Got a Friend in Me", a nod to Toy Story and a reminder that no one at Rogers walks alone. Each day, we close morning announcements by saying, "Remember, at Rogers, you've got a friend in me." Let's make this a great chapter in our Rogers story. It wasn't just a saying, it was a call to action, a reminder that everyone contributes to the culture and spirit of our school. Our final slide tonight shows the staff dressed as Toy Story characters, a fun moment, but also a symbol of our unity, joy, and belief that learning should be full of connection and care. So, thank you for your continued support of Rogers Elementary. We're proud of what we've accomplished and even more excited for what's to come. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I do have one question. What's your character in this picture?
I will have to admit, I had never seen the movie Toy Story. And so, thinking that you might ask that, I actually did ask the people who I was supposed to be.
I mean, you don't have on a suit, so that's a costume.
I am the character Andy.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. Andy's the little boy. It's Woody.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do I look like him?
You do, you do. All right, sorry. I was just like, wait a minute here.
You have homework now.
Yeah.
You need to go and watch. There's four?
Yeah.
Oh.
And they're working on a fifth one.
You have homework, yeah.
May I do that tomorrow from the hours of 8:40 to 12:55? Oh, that is true. Dr. Hogg, you found my secret. A movie a day the rest of the way.
Anyway, in all seriousness, same thing goes to you and your staff. Thank you so very much. I mean, it's because of your leadership and consistency and all the things you mentioned about your staff. I think you can attribute to yourself also. And you're a great leader and we appreciate the progress that Rogers continues to make for the students. So, thank you, thank you. Please pass along, on behalf of the board, thank you to your staff too, because we really appreciate it.
I will, thank you very much.
And again, there's lots of questions on e-boards that have already been asked. So, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right. Okay. Next is Melville High School, Dr. Jason Lander, Abby Mikowski, Sarah Gray, Katie Hardrick, and Brian Matier.
Good evening again. Patrick Kenoey is always a tough act to follow, but we will do our best. So, we're going to start off with some of our celebrations. And you heard us earlier talk about Ian and Allison, and they're just two of our graduating seniors that we're incredibly proud of. But a few other highlights from the year. We had a ton of students compete in a variety of extracurricular activities, both in sports and in clubs such as DECA, HOSA, FBLA. And 67 students in those various activities qualified for state. Again, whether that was state, solo, and ensemble, DECA, HOSA, and they'll be going to internationals as well in some of those given areas. So, proud for what they're achieving outside of the classroom as well. And we wanted to highlight our Panther Project Day of Service. So, on the day that our sophomores take the pre-ACT and our juniors are taking a college and career readiness assessment, our freshmen and seniors are serving the community. Our freshmen are going out through the district, through transportation and busing, to a variety of locations around the area, both in and out of the district. Then our seniors set up their own service learning opportunity, find an organization or project that's personal and important to them. They set up those connections and they work there throughout that day. So, one of our favorite days of the year, we just wanted to shout out everybody for their hard work on that day. Some staff celebrations as well. Our Teacher of the Year, Kelly Sutton, and Classified Employee of the Year, Jackie Cordes, are two people that we wanted to just shout out. In addition to that, Melville High School had the opportunity to recognize Jessica Smith, who's one of our math teachers. She was the Melville School District Representative or the Afton LeMay Chamber of Commerce Teacher of the Year, and she was honored earlier this year. Some of our other highlights, we have a Golden Panther Award that staff members give to each other each month. So, 10 different staff members received that this year, and it talks about the support that they receive from each other. And it's a really tight-knit group of people, both students and staff at Melville. So, that's probably one of the more prideful awards that people can receive in our building. And finally, our Project Lead the Way program, which you heard about earlier, receiving that distinguished program award. Our students and staff in our biomed, our engineering, and our computer sciences programs do a fantastic job. We had engineering out on the baseball field yesterday shooting off rockets that they had built. Our computer science group, the group of students came to, Ms. Mikowski and some of the other admin earlier this year wanted to host a cybersecurity week, speaking about ways to keep students safe online. So, they came to this whole proposal and made it into an entire spirit week that was fun and educational. So, no doubt why they're a distinguished program and we're excited for the work that they do. I'm going to turn things over to Brian Matier. He'll talk a little bit about our demographics.
Good evening. Just a quick snapshot of the students in our building at Melville High School. Enrollment has been pretty even the last three years. This year, we're at 1441. Of those students, roughly 40% of them receive free or reduced lunch. 15% of our students receive services from Special School District, and 13% receive EL services. So, the graphic on the right there you can see represents the nearly 30 languages that are spoken in our building. And Ms. Hardrick will speak on the teacher demographics.
Great. Next, we have our staff data. So, if you look at the pie chart with highest degree earned, we're very proud at Melville High School that nearly half of our teachers and our staff have multiple advanced degrees. And those multiple advanced degrees can include multiple master's degrees or their master's plus educational specialist degrees or higher. If we look at the charts on the right, the top one, you're going to see years of service for career totals. One thing that I'd like to point out there is our largest group have 16 or more years of experience in education. And if we look at our chart at the bottom, specifically for years of service at Melville School District, you're going to see a great balance for our teachers in years one to five, bringing with them a lot of experience, great fresh new perspectives. And then, you also see years 16 or more. Those teachers bring, our veteran teachers bring institutional knowledge and just a strong commitment to Melville High School. Next, we have Abby Mikowski.
Hello. I am here to represent the math department. I have the pleasure of working with them. And we will have two data points that we will look at to highlight our math success this school year. The one that you can see on the slide here is our math iReady benchmark data. This was given to over 269 students who had taken Algebra I and Pre-Algebra. When looking at this data, there are two main points that we'd like to highlight. From the fall to spring benchmark, we had a 13% increase in students who are early on mid or above grade level. We also had students who were in ninth grade right now. Those students are 201 of the 269 students who were tested. And of those ninth graders, we had 19% grow in the early on and above grade level. In addition to this, we would like to highlight the students who are performing two or more grade levels below. From the fall to the spring benchmark, we had seen a 16% decrease. And when you look at our ninth graders, who again are 201 students of the 269 tested, we saw a decrease by 21% from the fall to spring. And when looking at last year's data, this actually has gone down by 40%. So, that's a huge growth point that we would like to highlight. Next up, we will look at the Algebra I EOC data, which is represented on the chart here. You can see the data from the 23 EOC scores and then the 24 spring EOC scores last year for our Algebra I students. Two points that we would like to highlight here are that 30% of our students are scoring in the advanced or proficient category for the EOC. And then, from last year to this past spring in the below basic categories, we decreased the students that were scoring in this range from 30% to 24%. We're really looking forward to our scores for this year. We have increased the amount of sessions that we provide our EOC interventions for our Algebra I students. We had 10 different sessions this year and last year we had eight. And we were able to service 79 different students in those EOC interventions. So, we're super excited to see what those scores hold as we just wrapped that up last week. We also saw a decrease in the percentage of Fs in our students in Algebra I from first semester of last year to first semester of this year. So, we hope that that's a great indicator of what our EOC scores have to show for this year. Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sarah Gray to talk about English.
Good evening, everyone. I have the pleasure to serve the ELA department. And I'm going to speak first to our data point of the English Benchmark Assessment Data. What you'll observe here is that we increased in the advanced and the proficient area. So, that means that all of those students are reading at a proficient level. So, during our PLC time, our groups have really digged deep in finding ways to keep those kids reading at the proficient level and also challenging and setting high expectation for advanced readers. Our basic numbers stayed the same, and then our below basic dipped a little bit. I'm excited as we dig deeper into our academic times for students to help them schedule the opportunities that they need with the correct teachers to work on the standards that they're missing to get to that proficient level. So, definitely learning for all of us. And it's been a great journey with the addition of our academic times. And I'm confident as we keep on honing into the standards that we'll be able to bring those kids up to proficient. Our next slide is our English 2 EOC data. And what you'll notice here is the advanced and proficient pretty much stayed the same. We are digging in to our proficient data just to see where that 2% was off. Did we miss one of the priority standards? Can we dig a little deeper? We are also looking at vertical alignment across the classes to make sure everything was vertically aligned. And then, the last point to this data is the below basic. This data, we've taken an opportunity to look at the skills they may be missing, like decoding, background knowledge, vocabulary, all those priority skills that are important for kids to truly read at a proficient level. And I feel between our academic time, our EOC interventions, and our collaborative PLC groups that we'll be able to accomplish that goal. Thank you. And now, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Matier for building improvements.
Thank you, Sarah. So, much of what's been spoken about this evening comes back to what our improvement goals were for the year. This is a set of goals that we came up with, not just as an admin team, but with our leadership team and input from surveys from staff as well. So, improving student achievement was one of our top priorities. And much of what was said comes back to the data teaming process and our teams continuing to meet regularly this year with an emphasis on that data collection, continuing to create and use common assessments so that all of our students, so that we can ensure that all of our students in any class is learning at high levels. And then, using that data to inform what's needed next for the students. Do they need intervention? Do they, should we call them then to our AT, our academic time, so that their classroom teacher can provide them reteaching? Or do they need to go to a more targeted intervention with our EOC interventionists? So, or do they need enrichment? Do they have it? And can we grow and can we try to hit some of those kids who are at proficient and get them to advanced? The staff growth and development is another goal. This year, we implemented the Panthers Presents, once again, where teachers can choose a strand or choose different PD opportunities that are most relevant to them. This year, we had 11 teachers and seven outside experts to provide those PD opportunities for staff to choose. And the survey this year was very positive. 80% of our teachers said that the PD was likely to impact their instruction positively moving forward. The goal is to focus on high-yield instructional strategies. So, we're looking at engagement, active learning, SEL, all of those things that are going to impact students in their classroom. In addition to that, recognizing that student well-being is a component to their success here at Melville High School. So, a couple of things we want to focus on. Our leadership team came together monthly or more to talk about what are ways that we can improve our sense of belonging, attendance, all of those components that helps them be successful. And then, the mental health first aid. This is our second year of three with the grant that we received two years ago. And so, all of our sophomores each year gets trained in mental health first aid. They go through six sessions and they leave with a certificate on how to recognize mental health problems in themselves or others and what to do whenever they see that. Our staff also goes through that training. So, next year, we'll be about 75% completed with all of our staff. So, with the goal of having 100% of our staff to go through that so that we can continue to see, we now have three years of our three Panorama surveys in a row with an increase of sense of belonging with our students from 46% to 54%, which ranks 90th in the nation compared to high schools. And then, finally, improved college and career readiness. Our counseling staff works really hard at making sure that our students are completing their ICAP so that those students can have, make informed decisions about choice programs to come or career pursuits after high school.
So, to wrap things up, you know, you talked about the building goals that Brian just spoke about, and they really connect into what we're excited about. We have a lot of things to be proud of over the course of the year from our students and our staff, and we just want to see that continued growth. Our data team process and that enrichment process through academic time and Panther Prep, there's a strong foundation put in place this year with the work that our teachers did. And we're excited to see that next progression going into next year. And Brian mentioned the ICAP and the pictures that are highlighted here. We have so many fantastic choice programs and course offerings for our students. Our counseling staff, our Panther Prep teachers take a lot of time to ensure that students are aware of all their opportunities and that they build a solid plan for their four years to help prepare them for life after Melville. So, we want to increase the enrollment and opportunities that students are taking. And that Panther Prep, sorry, Panthers Present PD, you know, having staff teach each other and learn from each other has been phenomenal. Opportunities to share the good things that are happening in one classroom with somebody down the hall, and then they take that and make it their own. So, we're excited to see how those programs continue to evolve into next year. So, thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to share just a little bit about our year at Melville.
So, thanks. I feel like every year, you guys just get better and better at what you're doing. You know, the pictures of your students, the well-being of the total student, not a test score, not anything, is really, really shining brightly, in my opinion. You have so many opportunities to help so many diverse kids and our community. And I mean, I just, I can't say enough about you, you know, about your progress. I just think it's, you guys should be proud of everything you do for these kids. And the goal is that they all become productive human beings when they walk out your door. And I think you guys are targeting that perfectly for your demographic of students. So, thank you for that and all the hard work you guys do. And we just love seeing it. So, thank you. And please, thank your staff because I know that's a huge part of what you guys are. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. No, we'll pass that along, absolutely.
And you know, I am an alumni of Melville, just so you know, just 42 years ago. All right. Next is sixth, governance, food service dashboard, Katie Gag.
Good evening. I am Katie Gag. I'm the Director of School Food and Nutrition, and I have the pleasure to highlight the school food and nutrition program. So, with that, I want to give, just like the schools, I want to give a couple of highlights and shout-outs that I am proud of about school food and nutrition. We hone in on customer service. So, the students are our customers. We are basically their restaurant whether at school. So, I, at the beginning of the school year and throughout the school year, I focus on positivity, upbeat, greeting them with a smile. And as you can see in this picture, our staff go above and beyond and really make the students feel welcome when they come in the cafeteria. And I'm just proud that they work, the work that they do and get the kids excited because, I mean, lunch is the favorite time of day, I'm sure. Here's another huge highlight that I'm so proud of my team for. As these are, we're inspected by the Health Department twice a year, once each semester. These are our scores for the fall and spring. And I'm happy to say, if they got a point taken off, it might have been a light bulb in a piece of equipment, a gasket, never anything food safety-related. So, my team does a phenomenal job of making sure they serve safe food to our kids day in, day out. So, huge highlight. Notice a little more about the program. The school meals program is a federal program funded by the USDA. We are self-funded. So, all the revenue that we bring in from student sales as well as federal reimbursement must stay within the department. Once again, the revenue is coming from our sales and federal reimbursement and just got ahead of myself. So, here is just some data about SFNS, how many employees we have. We do have some openings for next school year. We'll look to fill those. 29% of our students as a whole qualify for free and reduced with the program. Like I mentioned, the Health Department inspects us twice a year with those amazing scores. We are due for our federal audit this coming year. I thought it was this past year, but got pushed off another year. So, I'm excited, but we're ready for them any year they want to come. Then, a procurement audit is done every six years, so that'll be the following year. We store about 725 cases of frozen commodities off-site. We have a great warehouse here on Melville's campus. If any of you would ever like to tour it, give me a holler. I gladly show it. We just put a new walk-in this past summer and it looks fantastic and it houses this food sometimes when power goes out. So, but it's not enough to store all the food that we get within the district. So, here's our participation data. As you could see, we're pretty steady. Happy to see the growth in breakfast, and that is due to universal free breakfast and other exciting... due to universal free breakfast and other excitement we're growing around breakfast. Federal reimbursement rates for this current school year for both breakfast and lunch. Next year's reimbursement rates will probably be out in July. So hoping they will go up. I actually had a conversation just a couple of days ago with the Desi FNS coordinator and she's confident to see an increase in those rates. I was very happy to have that conversation with her. Here's our revenue. We bring in about $4 million a year, 4.4 amongst the federal reimbursement and all of our sales. Here's our expenses, 4.6 so far this year. And here's our, we started the fund balance at 3.5 million and we look to be, this is as of May 6, 3.3 and that includes our capital equipment purchases. So just a net loss of 247. So I'm proud with all the food supplies increasing and kids increasing that we're, we're staying steady and have a good fund balance going into next school year. Here's our capital improvements that I'm planning for this, this coming summer. Continue to do a lot of work. Thankfully, we received a grant from Desi to pay for pretty much all of Blades' Dish Machine and a few other pieces of equipment for a total of $300,000. How do I evaluate the program? Well, if you don't have meal participation, you don't have a program. So I'm always looking at meal participation, always talking to the kids, trying to figure out ways to bring things they like to eat outside of school into school, but yet still following all those federal meal guidelines that we have to follow. Obviously, our audit results tells us how we're doing. Those amazing, amazing health inspection scores, student feedback, kids are honest, they'll tell you. And of course, our, our program fund balance. Looking ahead at next school year, some challenges. We always continue to have some challenges with families completing out the free and reduced meal application. I work closely with communications and the, and the principals to push it out as much as possible. Rising food costs, as we know, going to the grocery ourselves, few more nutrition standards are hitting our program. I could potentially, I think this PowerPoint was put in, uploaded like about a week ago. So I think I could cross out that last one, a potential decrease in federal reimbursement. Like I said, the coordinator feels pretty confident that we will, they will go up. The strengths, the amazing workforce of, of the boots on the ground, as I call them, all the people that are in those school cafeterias, they, they genuinely care and love for each other, the students and want to make sure they provide them with amazing nutrition meal each day. Supportive network, us directors in the St. Louis area, we, we bounce iPadios off each other. It's a good crew that I work with outside of the district as well. Excellent health inspection scores and then just a continued focus on, on our kids or customer service. That's about it. Little cap shot about school food.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions? No. I, on behalf of the board, want to thank you and your staff too for all the amazing work they do. I was thinking Friday evening that while we don't have them yet, I was glad we did approve the generators. I was like, that was money well spent. Even though I, I think we won't get them for a while, I think if I remember correctly. So, and then I also want to acknowledge your work on applying for grants to help pay for things. So thank you for that. That's good work and a benefit to everybody in the district. So thank you. But great work. Okay. So I think now you get to stay up for the universal free breakfast.
Sure do. Katie Gag, Director of School Food and Nutrition. I'm here to present Universal Free Breakfast Program for the upcoming school year. What is the Universal Free Breakfast Program? It's, we offer breakfast to all students at no cost. We still claim the students at their designated pay categories, whether it be full pay, reduced price, or free. In order for the program to be successful or break even pretty much, the, the school needs to have about 45% or greater free and reduced percentage. We have implemented the Universal Free Breakfast Program, three elementary schools, a Beasley Beer Bama Porter, our highest free and reduced elementaries. We started that back on October 31st in 2022. And this year, we brought on Berkeley, started that March 3rd of, of this year. Meal participation, as you would assume, did increase at all schools. And here is that data from our participation and the little asterisk show when we actually started the Universal Free Breakfast Program. I have not pulled data from May yet for Berkeley, but a 10% increase with kids getting up that early, I think is pretty good. And they're really excited about that. So like I said, if, if we're able to feed kids no charge, I would love to do that across the board. Here are the free and reduced percentages by school, showing that they all fall within those parameters. And it's always a big push at the beginning of the school year to encourage families to complete the application once again because the free and reduced application does have to be completed each school year within 30 days. Their status does roll over for 30 days, but I work with those principals. Once again, we get those notices out and try and get parents to get the application completed. Financial impact. So we, like I mentioned, we, we claim them at their designated pay category. The federal reimbursement rates for next year have not been published yet. Those are the breakfast federal reimbursement rates we currently receive. And with an increase in participation in all categories, the federal reimbursement does cover all costs of the program. I'd like to recommend we continue these programs hopefully for next school year.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? No. So I actually pulled this out of consent and I wanted you to present on this because I'm so proud of the work you do on this. I mean, I just think that the public should know that you figure out a way to feed all the kids at all these schools. So thank you for that and sorry for kind of springing on, that on you at the last minute, but I just felt that we should acknowledge the work and the benefit to so many students that this brings forward, assuming we vote yes on it. I probably should have said this afterwards, but. So if I could please get a motion to approve the Universal Free Breakfast Program at Beasley Beer Bama Porter and Berkeley for the 25, 26 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
All right. Next is 25, 2025, 2026 Classified Employee Salary Schedules. Dr. Shannon Pike.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Pike, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, and I'm here tonight to provide an overview of classified salaries for 25, 26. We have continued to provide an annual salary overview process that involves classified, classified directors along with the Chief Financial Officer to maintain the competitiveness that we started with Prop E. And that salary analysis will be an annual process that we work through. In total, classified pay schedules will receive an average of a 3% increase in totaling $581,000 that's been invested in classified salaries district-wide. And this includes the advancement of steps for all classified employees. We continue to look at opportunities for internal growth and development within our classified employee groups. And we continue to analyze that classified movement by group in areas of retirement, resignations, transfers out of a position, number of hires, and transfers into a position to identify any hard-to-fill positions that we may have. I can tell you, we've had a lot of success in hiring any of our recent retirements, any resignations we may have had, but a lot of those are due to retirements. We may see more of those next year due to Prop E increases. Next year will be a third year of that Prop E increase. This year, a focus and a priority has been on recruitment efforts for some of those harder-to-fill positions. We still can't deny that as an organization, we have one set that is certified and one that is classified and operates more as somewhat of a corporation. And we have to maintain that competitiveness not only with other districts, but within the market. And sometimes that is a little more challenging at times. So we have specifically targeted some of those harder-to-fill entry positions such as custodians or bus drivers and done more things specific to pop-up interviews tied to one position for that vacant grouping. We've had an ad in the newspaper, social media posts, compliments of communications. And we continue, we're continually looking at ways to market those positions and working with the directors and those specific employee groups. The best way we can recruit, we know this, is telling our MyMelville story, right? We are our biggest advocates. We are the ones that are out there. And when you ask the directors what helps with the recruitment, word of mouth. So really trying to put flyers in their hands, put them at the transportation desk, at the facilities department in our schools when parents and community members come in and visit. And me saying it right now because hopefully people are watching this board meeting, and they want to come and work for the Melville School District. So again, it is our, our job to recruit and retain our own employees. So again, here are the salary schedules for the 25, 26. And with that, I will ask the Board of Education to approve the 25, 26 salary schedules, the proposals.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Nothing? There are a few questions on e-boards that have already been answered. So if I could get a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 Classified Employee Salary Schedules as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you. Next is 6D, 2025, 2026 Nurses MOU, Dr. Shannon Pike. Hi.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Pike, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
I'm Marissa Barham. I'm the school nurse at Porter and I'm our chief negotiator for Melville Healthcare Professionals.
And we are here tonight to prevent, to present an overview of the 25, 26 MAPPA MOU and ask for board approval.
So this is my first time presenting here. So thank you guys for having me. Negotiations this year were really, really awesome, I feel. We all feel. The last couple of years, negotiations has been a big, I don't know, trying time of us trying to figure out how to work together or work well together, you know, work out the kinks. And this year went super well. We negotiated in two days, which was insane. And I feel like our, we had just amazing growth in our relationship with the district and learning to work together. And we had a big thank you to Marshall who came to our second meeting and really helped us work through a different side of things that we hadn't looked at. And he lent us a lot of time that evening. And it really helped us see that we can truly, you know, work together to accomplish great things. And so we're really excited for that. Okay. So we didn't have any like giant changes, I feel, but we had some really great changes this year. So for 3.4 on our MOU, the collaborative process, we're changing from meeting once a semester to monthly meetings with our lead nurse. So our lead nurse will come check in with nurses and HRAs every month. And then we will also, the association and the district will meet on a monthly basis. And we're really looking forward to the accountability from both sides in our communication and making sure that we are checking in and really, really, really pushing the, the envelope with our communication because I feel, we all feel every time we get to negotiations, communication is really what it comes down to. So we're really looking forward to that. And then we also, we just updated on 6.1 to reflect two remote workdays and five PD days, which we're very excited to be able to have professional development in person together, as well as our own time to work through our own professional development with our different organizations that we were able to get last year. And then for staffing, we changed the update for Dr. Pike's role. And then we also said that our lead nurse, Jen Ahern, in October is going to assess our staffing needs and our like HRA scheduling as needed. So hopefully we'll be, that'll be pretty fluid anyway, especially with her checking in with us monthly. But that's also just like, we want to make sure like in October that she is really looking at the needs in each building.
Then 7.5, new employer, new employee onboarding. The lead nurse will make an orientation manual and checklist. So at their staffing meeting that they have at back to school, they'll have this checklist and that will include a skills check portion of that meeting. For their mentorship, 7.6 by September 1st, the district and MAPPA will have, we will make sure that they have their mentors provided to them so that they can familiarize themselves with the MOU and be provided with a mentor mentee partnership. 4.3 salary, their salary increase is 3%. And again, we really thank Marshall for coming and spending that time having a collaborative conversation with the district and MAPPA to talk about financials at that meeting. And with that, MAPPA ratified the 25, 26 MOU on Wednesday, May 14th. And this evening, we asked the Board of Education to approve the 25, 26 MAPPA MOU.
All right. Any other questions besides what are, have already been asked?
It's good that you're having that communication monthly rather than annually. I think that's going to hopefully bring any oddball problems to the head quickly and get them addressed quickly and then not have surprises and you start negotiating and find, oh, look, this is going to take a lot longer than planned. So that was definitely a good addition to it. So a lot of the changes are superficial, but I think that one stuck out as definitely a good step forward.
Okay. If I could get a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 MHPA MOU.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. And I wanted to thank you, Marissa, for attending tonight and sharing with us your experience because we don't ever know really what happens. So I appreciate that you came, spent the evening with us to explain and tell us that you're happy and that hopefully the rest of the nurses are happy. But also express our thanks to the nurses. We know we've, Adam Smith gives us the report on how many incidents you guys take care of and wow is all I can really say. So thank you, thank you. I only said that after we approved the MOU, so you can't back out. No.
Did I sign it? Thank you so much. And I, we really appreciate how much you guys support us. And I think really it is a big point. We are super excited to really hold our communication accountable because I think communication is something we've talked about the last several years. But this, I think we're finally getting to a point where we're really going to follow through with that. And we're all looking forward to, you know, getting closer with the district and you guys knowing our faces more and us knowing your faces. And so it's, it's good. We have a really good feeling coming out of it. So.
Good. Well, great. Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay. Next is fiscal year 26 budget. Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, CFO, and I am presenting an update to the fiscal year 26 preliminary budget. Really, I think Jeff said it last month. I think he's going to be happy. The number did change on the SAT. So we're now looking on formula, an increase of about $4.1 million. So that's the main thing that changed on this budget, set of budget numbers. So other than that, most everything is very, very similar. So we're still at break even because we put all of pluses and minuses right now to capital funding. So you'll see now that on the capital page for fiscal year 26, the tax levy revenue that's going into capital fund would be around $19 million. So that increased from a month ago. So we're still shooting for break even on the operating side. Other than that, nothing else really changed. So that's the update for tonight. I would anticipate the, the main thing that I would be fine tuning for the June budget approval would be just the level of capital fund expenses. And a lot of that is just the guess of the timing of big project bills that you receive from the vendors. It can literally vary by millions of dollars, but it's money that we've already got. So it's not a big deal. It's just timing. So really, that's all I've got for tonight. Are there any questions? There's no approval tonight. It's just an update.
No, I think people ask pre-meeting questions. And then I also wanted to mention that we are having a finance committee meeting to go over the final budget proposal prior to our next official board meeting. So.
Correct.
Right. So we will have our community input there from our finance committee board members. So thank you. All right. Next is fiscal year, fiscal year 25 budget adjustment. Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, Chief Financial Officer, and I am now presenting the fiscal year 25 budget amendment. Really, there's not a lot of change. We have consistently on the monthly financial statements since August, forecast an operating loss of close to $1 million. With this set of adjustments, it ticks up very slightly to almost 1.1 million. But that is really due to accelerating computer purchases that were budgeted in fiscal year 26. And because of really dominoes from the tariffs, we're accelerating computer purchases by about $572,000. So it reduces the amount.
the amount of fiscal year 26 expense and it increases fiscal year 25 expense. So that netted with other offsetting pluses and minuses, put our operating net loss for the year at, right at around $1.1 million. And really, when we get to the end of the year, historically, a lot of times we come in around $1 million more favorable than what we're forecasting. So we could be very close to break even if we get, you know, good luck with taxes and delinquent payments and things like that. So really, that's all I've got on the budget adjustments for tonight. Are there any questions?
Are we pretty much done getting local revenue from the county?
No, we get a, we get another, we'll get another payment in June. And like I said, we don't really know how much we're going to get on delinquent taxes. The, you know, it's, you just really don't know until you get the final payment.
We're still expecting it to be under previous years and it's still going to be underperforming by about 3%.
I'm expecting, the traditional collection percentage was 97.13%. We guessed, well, we started the year off, we, we've got a budget this year of 96.72%. And right now, there's a chance we could come really close to that. Last year, the year before, we came in at 96.26%. Doesn't sound like a lot and big difference, but it's about $1 million. And so it looks like this year with the adjusted budget at 96.72%, it's possible we could be really close to that percentage. And that's what we budgeted for fiscal year 26. But we won't know until we get the June payment.
And since the senior tax raise is supposed to take effect, is it, collections happening at the end of this calendar are going to start being adjusted by that? Or is it going to be in 26 for the collections that we're going to get at the end of that?
Well, it'll be, the amount levied will be adjusted. So we'll have a lower levy and I would still expect similar collection percentages. It's just that the property tax freeze will lower the amount levied.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. If I could please get a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay. Thank you, Marshall. Next is seven, action items by consent. Does anyone need to pull anything? No one? If I could please get a motion to approve action items by consent, A through P.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right. That was a lot of consent agenda. Next is open period for patron comments and there is no one signed up. So if we could get an authorization of closed session.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under Missouri Revised Statute 610.021 subsections 1 through 21 and 610.022 subsections 1 through 6. Lease, purchase, or sale of real estate, 610.0212. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, 610.0213. And individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment, 610.02113. Legal action causes, causes of action or litigation, 610.0211. Records are protected from disclosure by law, 610.02114.
Okay. Ann?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Serene?
Yes.
Peggy? Yes. Okay. If I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion-